Good morning. It is nine AM and I will call to order the January nineteenth meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissions. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Chair, it looks like the clerk may be having audio issues. I'll go ahead and do that for you. Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a forum.
Thank you, Phil. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone could please make sure that they're all microphones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking, so that remote observers can hear the proceeding clearly. We'd appreciate it now if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting. Brad?
Good morning. Assuming that, assuming that users are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants, Pat, the Participants tab, generally speaking toward the bottom of the page, and you look to the very right, lower right-hand corner of your screen, you will see a Raise Hand function. If you would like to speak, select the Raise Hand function, and that will indicate to the, to the host that you would like to speak in the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited three minutes, and pertain to items not on today's agenda. Has there many members of the public who wish to address the commission at this time? Has anyone raised their hand?
Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and account approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move into Action Items One. Is the clerk here?
Yes, the Commission Board assignments for 2021.
Okay. At this time, uh, let's go through, uh, I was wanting to quick, quickly check with the commissioners at this time. Is anybody looking at being removed from a certain appointment or stay on the one? That the ones they are assigned to at this time?
This is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I would say that I should be removed from the Chamber of Commerce, because that is restricted for the chairman to be on that committee.
And that is correct, Robert. And so I was just wanting to know, is there, uh, and since I am on the Tri- Rivers Fair Board and the, uh, see, the Board, Slayne County Building Authority, is one of those boards that you would like to be on? Robert?
No, thank you. Welcome, welcome to being the chairman, Roger.
Okay, so, okay, well, and then it's, I don't mind unless there's a, so it's like, since you are becoming, going off of Slayne area Chamber of Commerce, that will just lead you onto one, one committee, is that correct? So you would like to be on the Building Authority?
No, no, I don't. I, I wish to remain on the Airport Authority and hand off the Chamber of Commerce to you as the bylaw state, or the bylaws of the Chamber State.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm okay with mine. I briefly talked to my fellow commissioners at the Building Authority today about the Jail Population Reduction Committee. That was started six years ago, I believe, and we do, we originally had, I think, twelve to fifteen members on there. We had citizens of large, and over the time, it kind of became a build a jail committee. And I just, I still think that it's relevant, especially with the new jail, because the sheriff had always indicated that some of the programming would be tough because he didn't have space. And I think that that will, that problem will be alleviated now. And so I think I would ask, and, and I think Linda did email me the original bylaws of that committee. I think it had different, you know, I think somebody needed to be there from the faith community and et cetera. And over time, we got rid of all those people. And I would, I would ask my fellow commissioners to, you know, in the next couple of weeks, maybe read over those, that bylaws and maybe reorganize it to better accomplish our goals. But I'm, I'm so happy, Mr. Chair, to be on that one and the Building Authority.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else have any comments to be made?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm happy with my present committees. If I could stay on them, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. White.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, what, Mr. Commissioner?
I'm, I'm happy serving in the two that I'm currently assigned to, that are, our appointments do state that each commissioner shall be appointed to two boards. So I am very flexible if, if there's another board that Commissioner Vidrickson would like to sit on, that I am currently on, I would be happy to take a different assignment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wees. Commissioner Vidrickson, coming back to you, is there another committee that you would like to be on? That you see one that you'd like to be?
I guess I'm unaware of what Commissioner Wees is referring to that's in the bylaws. I haven't seen that. But if you, if you so insist, Mr. Chairman, I'll go on to the, the Fair Board.
Okay. So let it be said that Mr. Vidrickson will be on the Tri- Rivers Fair Board, and rest will remain as presented.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the board appointments for 2021 as set forth by the Slayne County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
Okay, and it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, Commission Board stays approved. The board appointments for 2021 is set forth by the Slayne County Board of Commission. Uh, are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Yay.
Commissioner Wees?
Yay.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's five to zero. Thank you. Move on to item number two.
Review of Amendment One to Resolution Twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, review of Section Six with mask mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason. We'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, gentlemen. As soon as Brad pulls up my slides, then we'll get started. All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Slayne County COVID nineteen update for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of where we are currently nationally. One thing I do want to point out here, if you remember in the last two or three updates, where I've mentioned that the two-week average of cases and deaths have kind of been taking a slow downward movement. This last two weeks, we've started to see upward movement in those national case numbers and deaths again. Next slide. Also seeing the same thing at the state level with cases, hospitalizations and deaths. We were seeing that kind of steady over the last two or three reporting periods where it was going down a little bit, down a little bit. And now we're starting to see this kind of upward creep in this last two weeks. Next slide. These are our totals as of yesterday. The, uh, one thing I really want to kind of point out, though, is, and I'll show it a little bit better in the next couple of slides, is that when you look at the hospitalizations, our case numbers and deaths for these first eighteen days of January, we are actually looking better than where we were at this same time last month in December for the first eighteen days. And that'll be a little more evident on the next slide, please. So as of yesterday, we've seen about seven hundred and twenty-one cases of COVID in the county. But that is, though, about four hundred, four hundred and fifty less than where we were at this time last month. Next slide. Same thing with deaths, sixteen in January, but we are still lower than where we were at this time in December. Now, I want to just kind of be cautiously optimistic about these. That, yes, things are starting to look a little bit better. You know, is that for this reporting period? Is the trend going to stay that way? You know, there's the, the variants that have, you've probably heard about that are, are being talked about, and we really don't know how that's going to impact us a little bit later. So people still need to stay vigilant about their, their actions. Next slide. Just a couple additional clusters in the last couple of weeks. Not to be, not unexpected, considering just kind of how the widespread nature of this is. Next slide. Testing updates. Well Health is still having it at Church of the Cross. There are a couple of other ones coming up that I didn't have all the information for when I updated these last night, but they will be on these slides when we, we send them out later. Solana Family Healthcare is having a testing event on January twenty-third from eleven AM to three PM Salvation Army. Excuse me. And Solana Regional will have one on the twenty-fourth at Comm Care from ten AM to two PM. Both of these events are for anybody to be tested at. And then if you look at their specific websites, they'll have the information on those testing events. Next slide. So again, this is kind of what most people are wanting to know more about. So I thought this week I would kind of hit on a few things that we do know and kind of what we don't know situation. So we have set up in conjunction with Solana Family and Solana Regional, a joint operation of a semi-permanent vaccine site at the old J.C. Penney at Central Mall. Our current focus is continuing to finish those Phase One healthcare workers, which we'll be doing over this week and next week. And then at some point, advancing to Phase Two, once the governor pretty much tells the counties that they can do so. What we don't know in relation to that is specifically when Phase Two will start. We are working on some planning stuff amongst our, our vaccine planning partners to be able to help clarify what categories, you know, what groups are going to be in that Phase Two, what the priority is going to be, and trying to get that information together. But we also don't know is when our next vaccine shipments will arrive. We might get twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice before they do. So there's a little bit of planning there that has to take place very quickly when they show up, which then probably leads into the next week for actually getting them out. And then we'd also don't know how many doses will arrive. We don't have predictability on either one of those two things at this point. As we get more information, though, we are trying to push it out in those Tuesday and Thursday vaccine updates, and the signup link is there at the bottom of the slide. Next slide. So just as a reminder, these are the five phases that Kansas is using, and they have added the, kind of the projected potentially kind of timeframes for getting through those phases. Just keep in mind that they're based on what the state says as far as when the state will move from Phase One to Phase Two. Also, an availability of vaccine and completion of a prior phase. And so just depending on how vaccine comes to us, how much comes to us, we'll all kind of feed into how long it takes us to get through and complete a, a phase on the, the graph here. Next slide. So just as a reminder, there are different campaigns going on. There is also the hashtag Mask On Economy Strong with the Solana Chamber of Commerce, and we'll, Eric from the Chamber and myself will be on KS, excuse me, not KSL, K-I-N-A, this Saturday to talk about COVID and the economy here specifically in the local area at nine o'clock. So make sure you tune in for that. Next slide. And then just continue, the mask order, continue following all of the recommendations, social distancing, hand washing. The health order will expire at the end of this week, and I anticipate, don't anticipate at this point extending the order. And then we'll just have to watch carefully how things progress as we move through, trying to get people vaccinated, watching for if and when these new variants happen to show up in Kansas, and then how that impacts the spread in different areas. So with that, that ends my prepared presentation, and then if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've got a question. You kind of briefly went over the signup website. Is that live now, or is that going to be?
The, the sign up?
It goes on the previous screen.
For the... So right now, the signup website I had on there?
Vaccinations.
Get the updates. That is live for those Tuesday and Thursday vaccine updates. Is that the one you're referring?
Oh, that's, oh, I thought I, I apologize. I thought it was a sign up for getting your vaccine. I, that's...
No, that will come a little bit later on, once we get ready to launch Phase Two, because we already have all of the, or scheduling all of the Phase One healthcare workers still. So there'll be more of a public-facing scheduling site that will come out a little bit later on.
My second question is, I have been getting calls about Stage Two or Phase Two, where it says critical, critical workers. I think there's a lot of people that think that they're critical workers. Who decides that? Is that the state that decides that? Is that the county that decides that?
It's the county, and I'm working with my planning partners for the, the vaccine rollout here, which is Solana Family and Solana Regional. As we look through some of the guidance documents that were provided, but it doesn't clearly say that these are the Phase Two critical workers. So we're working on developing what that entails, what that means, so that we can get all of that information out to the public probably in the next couple of weeks. Because a lot of our time right now has been spent on getting the site up, figuring out the logistics, and then the Phase One healthcare schedule to finish them.
Thank you.
And Jason, this is Commissioner Sparks. Can you, what is it that's ending at the end of the week? Hit on that a little bit more.
Oh, the, you're talking about the two testing events?
No, the, something about a health order that ends?
Oh, the mass gathering limit. That health order expires on the twenty-fourth at midnight, I believe, is.
So does that mean that everybody can go back to larger groups and all of that if they want?
Right. So some of the limits that it imposed, like the fifteen people, there are still some limits for events, depending on whether it's a sporting event because of Acacia, and there's school limits and things like that. But it, right now, I just don't see with the current numbers, and of course, we'll keep watching, a significant reason to continue that for another fifteen days.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Wees here. Jason, if the mandate is allowed to expire, does that also include the mask mandate?
No, the health order for the mass gathering and the mask mandate are two separate orders. So that one, the mask one is still in place regardless.
And is the one about the order for the, and I'm sorry, bars and restaurants to be closed at midnight, is that a separate one, then, that order there that ends this Friday also?
That was all part of the health order that will expire this weekend.
Okay, so when that expires, they can go back to staying open until two o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a consensus, do we need a consensus on this from the commissioners? Okay, all right. Jason, well, thank you. Is there any other thing?
Well, I, Commissioner Vidrickson?
Yes.
And I, I have, so that would take place this weekend, and, you know, we're so far from being out of this. I'm, I'm questioning why we would relax our, our guidelines at this point.
Yeah. Jason, do you want to comment on that?
Well, we've seen the decrease. Part of our original intent with the health order was to get through the holidays and to get through, we extended it after Christmas to, because of that potential holiday surge, which thankfully we didn't see here. Now, I, I'm certainly open to, if there is still support to keep it in place, but just right now, I just don't see a, looking at the numbers, a huge impact to try and continue to support keeping it.
Well, my, my feeling is that, I mean, we're averaging somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred cases a day, it seems like, or somewhere in that neighborhood, fifty to eighty cases anyway. I'm just, just doesn't seem to me like we should be opening it back up.
Well, and we still got six days until it expires, so.
We don't have another meeting to do then either.
Well, you, that would only be if you decided that you wanted to not let it, or, excuse me. So within the six days, if it decided to extend it, you would only need another meeting if you decided that you wanted to not extend it. Or you wanted to change the order or anything else.
So what you're saying is, is right now, until we have our next meeting, this will, this order will stay into effect until we decide it next Tuesday or to change it?
No.
Okay.
This meeting as a public health order, or this order as a public health order
Okay.
would, if after, on the twenty-fourth, if it decided to extend it, it would extend. If you decided that for some reason you didn't want to extend it, or that you wanted to amend it, to change it, then we would need a meeting of the commissioners to amend, change, or revoke that order.
Okay. If you have any thoughts or comments? Okay, thank you, Jason. Next item, item three.
RFA one-one-two dash two-one Simpson Road Improvement with K-DUP Contract with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, I've, I've talked with you about this project for a while now, but that's the, a road improvement project on Simpson Road between Magnolia and Crawford. And this is a project where... And this is a project where I'm designing a project to add a four foot shoulder with four one, four slopes and three one back slopes and extend any crossroad structures in the project area. So in this request, it's just asking the Sling County Commissioners to accept and sign the contract between Sling County and the Kansas Department of Transportation. And, and really the, the contract defines the responsibilities of both parties. But the main thing that it defines is, is the, you know, that you're going to be interested in is the, the funding responsibilities. And so currently the project has an estimated construction and construction engineering cost estimate of a little over $800,000. And this contract defines that, that KDOT through the, the federal funds will be responsible for 90% of those costs. And Saleen County would be responsible for 10% of those costs as well as 100% of the cost for any additional right of way and utility adjustments. So the, the two alternatives for action would be number one, to accept and sign the contract with KDOT. And then the second alternative would be to not accept the contract and then forego the, the federal funds for this project. Staff recommends to sign this contract with KDOT. As far as the budget impact, right now I'm estimating about a $200,000 of costs and that's going to be the 10% of the construction cost and construction engineering. And then again, the 100% cost for the right of way and utility relocations. So we will have some about a half mile of water line for a rural water district that's going to have to be relocated. That line is on its own easement outside of the road right of way. So we'll have to cover, cover that cost. And so that's where a good chunk of that money's coming from as well. So the project costs will be paid for out of the 124 account, which is a special road construction, also referred to as the, the one mil fund. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the commissioners at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for our discussion or possible action.
Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDOT contract as presented.
Is there a second?
Commissioner, recite second to motion.
Okay. It's been, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 112-21 Simpson Road Improvement KDOT Contract. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to the next item. Information items and Mr. Justin Mater, we're back to you, kid.
All right. Good morning again. So I'm here to provide my quarterly update. Brad, could you put up the 2020 construction map? Okay. So I'm going to start off with just the accomplishments that we've had for the, for the construction of last year's program. So that we did finalize all of the aggregate shouldering on Don Meyer Road as well as Burma Road. And on the map there, it should be, you'll see the, the green line and those represent those two projects. As well as the, the, the crack seal projects and that's the red lines on all those. And so we completed those and that kind of, that did finalize all of our road maintenance program for 2020. But I also wanted to mention some of the design projects that we've, we've completed since my last update. Now, these aren't all on the map because I try to stick them with the map, the construction projects. And if I threw in all the design projects, it gets a pretty busy map. So, so these aren't going to be on there. But the, the first one is the Mina Road Bridge Plans. And that's the, that's going to be a reinforced concrete haunt slab on Mina Road, just east of Jipson Valley Road. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a little while. Also the 2021 reinforced concrete bridge replacement projects. We completed the design for the Culver Pipe Replacement Project and that's going to be on the asphalt roads. And then another one that we just signed the contract with, but we've been working on this, the Simpson Road Improvement Project between Magnolia and Crawford. And these are the KDOT is, it's what they call an office check set of plans. And then we've also been working on the right of way acquisition, utility relocations. So for projects that, and for 2020 that we're still working on, because now I'll be moving on to the, the planned projects portion. Is the, the reinforced concrete box projects. And so on the map, those are the light blue dots. So we did award those projects to two different contractors. Reese Construction has four projects. And they're currently working on the project on Cloud Street as well as, I think they it's either Monday or Friday last week, they closed Mina Road between Woodward and Cunningham. And they're going to start working on that project as well. So the other contractor that was awarded a project was L and M Contractors and they were awarded the project on Woodward Road between Hobbs Creek and Rose Hill. They're currently working on that project and like the, the box is pretty well complete and they're just waiting on the dirt contractor to do the final grading and, and road surfacing. So that completes the, the 2020 program. So now I'll move on to the 2021. So Brad, if you could change that to the 2021 map. There we go. Thank you. So for the 2021 map, I'm going to start with our, our larger span structures. And I mentioned the, the bridge on Mina Road, just, just east of just Jipson Valley Road. And that's 160 foot reinforced concrete haunt slab. And you'll see that's the, the brown rectangle on the map. So we did get the plans complete and we're going to be opening bids for that project relatively soon on January 28th, 2021. So here in a, a week or two. This project did, I did submit this project for a Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program and we were awarded $200,000 from that program. To help cover the cost of this project. So that was pretty exciting. The next project, I went ahead and put this one on here, even though it's, it's, it won't be constructed this year. This is probably the first time I'm mentioning it. But it's the reinforced concrete haunt slab project on Waterwell Road, just west of Jipson Valley Road. What we're, we're going to be doing is probably in 2021, we'll be completing the survey and design of the project. And then with a, with a 2022 construction timeframe on that. So for the, the reinforced concrete box projects that we're going to do this year, we actually are going to be doing two different projects. And so I'm going to, I call it the first round and second round. I wanted to, to go ahead and get a set of projects put out there for the contractor. You know, instead of waiting to do just one, one really large project. So the first round is going to be the, there's six sites. And those are going to be the light blue circles on, on the map there. Plans are about 95% done. And so we'll be submitting those for, to begin advertising for bid here. Really pretty, pretty shortly. The second round are the red circles that you see on the map. And there's nine project sites with that one. And we're currently going through the survey and the design phase of that. Probably have a bid letting, probably, it'll probably be late this year. Some of these projects have some complexities with, with flooding that we're going to have to, to try to rectify. So it's not just a simple bridge replacement projects. And so it'll take a little bit longer to design these projects. Now moving on to our asphalt road maintenance program. For the Bituminous Chip Seal, those are the blue lines on the map. We've got about 40 miles, which is pretty typical each year that we have on that. It's, this will be a very similar project that we had in their type of chip seal that we had in 2020. The, for the Bituminous, the asphalt patching and overlay, those are the black lines on the map. So the first one I've, I'll mention is Old 81 Highway from K143 North to Ottawa Road. That'll be the county line. Instead of just, it'll sort of receive a two inch overlay, but before we do that, we're going to add two foot winding on each side of the road. So this, this road, you know, as you're probably all aware is very, very high traffic volumes on this road as well as ag equipment. And we're just trying to, with the two foot widening, we'll hopefully keep that edge drop off that you get minimized a little bit. So the second project is Old Highway 40 from I-135 east to the city limits. And this project will be an overlay, but it also include a, a two foot asphalt widening. And then attached to the, on the east end of that, there's, we're going to overlay North Street from Old 40. And then going back to the east, just a short distance. And then the last one is Waterwell Road from Burma Road to I-135. And this project here will probably include that short section on Airport Road. You know, there's that section on from Waterwell going back to the north where it does tie into the city limits. But the plan right now is just to overlay our, the, the section that's in the county right of way. All of these projects, you know, there, there's an estimated cost of about $160,000 per mile for a commission of two inch overlay. I, I need to still work out some details for the widening. So I don't have those estimates with me right now. But that's, I just wanted to, to, to keep you guys knowing kind of what that average cost of an overlay is. So and then finally is for the, the crack seal, those are the red lines on the map. We don't have a lot of miles of crack seal this year, which is a good thing. That means we're you know, we're, we're starting to get ahead a little bit on a crack seal, but those five and a half miles of Ohio Street north of I-70. That's a project where it's got quite a few transverse cracks and these are big deep cracks. You know, and so it's going to take quite a bit of material. So even though we're not doing a whole lot of miles. Our, our total cost for our crack seal might not, you might be very similar to, to previous years. So the, the next one I'm going to mention is the, our, the road improvement projects for 2021. The first one is Thatcher Road and that's Ohio to Crystal Springs. And this is going to be upgrading an earth road to a gravel road. So typically this map just entails the projects that's going to be led to a contractor or however. I did want to throw in these a couple of projects, just so you, you've kind of get a good feel of kind of all the, the projects we're doing in the county. But this is one that's going to be done by county forces. The second one is also going to be done by county forces and that's on Simpson Road from Waterwell Road to Mina Road. This currently is a gravel road and we're going to upgrade it to a better gravel road. So it will have the, the ditches will be regraded. And then the maintenance crews are also going to just add, add a more base rock to the road. So give it more structural capacity on that, on that road. And then the, the last road improvement project, I did not show this on, on here because I've been talking about it for a while. But we're really looking at a 2023 construction and that's that Simpson Road Improvement from Magnolia Road to Crawford Street. You know, we're going to add the shoulders and regrade the ditches on that. So, but we will in 2021 be going through the process of right of way acquisition and utility adjustments. Another set of projects that's not on the map, because I'm not sure when they're going to happen. And these are these FEMA mitigation projects. All of these projects are submitted to FEMA. They're going through their review. FEMA moves at their own pace. So I'm not sure if funds for these projects are going to break loose in 2021 or later. I'm hoping they're going to be, we can get at least a few of these done. But those are the, there's three projects where there was some channel bank erosion on Stemma Road, Jipson Valley Road and Cunningham Road. We have closed these sections of, of road to, to traffic. Where the, the improvement projects will be to reconstruct a road around the erosion. We've got two projects on Jipson Valley Road and Kingman Road. And really that's, we call that a floodwater overtopping mitigation projects where we're going to armor the road with, with asphalt. You know, so when those floodwaters do come, we don't, we don't lose the road. And then finally there's a bridge project on Fallen Road, just a half a mile east of Burma Road. Where you know, that's a fairly well traveled road and it, the, the asphalt road does get overtop quite a bit. And so this will be a project where we would put in a bigger structure, do a little bit of profile grade on, change on that and try to, to keep more of the floodwaters under the road instead of over top of it. The next project I'm going to talk about is there's a concrete containment structure around the road and bridge bulk fuel tanks. We, the first thing that we had to do for this, we have to do for this project is we've got to relocate some electric lines. We have to lower those. We actually had a electrician lined up on Thursday to do that. However, COVID-19 strikes again. And he lost quite a few staff to where we're going to have to push that project off a little bit to you know, hopefully for a week or two. And then as soon as the, the electric lines are relocated. And then I've got a, a project pretty well ready to bid out. And that's for the, the concrete containment on that. So I'm, I'm still hoping to get the, the, that project bid out here late this winter is my hopes. Some other things that, that we've got going on are the, our biennial bridge inspections. And those are the inspections on the federally defined definition of a bridge. And so that's, those are your structures that are, that are longer than 20 feet. Most of them we have to do. We have to do an inspection every two years. Some of them are on an annual inspection. But 2021 is when we do do the majority of our, our bridges. And so that's going to take a fair amount of staff time. We also have currently going on is the, the local road safety plan. And this is also using the high risk rural road funds, federal funds for that. There is a consultant hired. It's all, it all kind of went through KDOT on that. But that project is currently under, on, or continually being worked on. You know, we're, we're doing this with around 20 other counties, you know, so it's a little bit slower process. But we do still have some involvement in that. Of course, as time allows, we're always trying to, to update our, our non-bridge sized structures. And we can just call those our culvert or small structure inspections. And then finally in 2021, I've got a goal of getting our road design standards updated and, and approved with, with the commission. So I think that'll, that'll be a somewhat intensive process. But it's, it's something that I believe really needs to be, really needs to be done. So for the, the budget update, the, the total 2020 asphalt construction program, you know, so that's going to include the chip seal, crack seal, the asphalt overlays and the shouldering. That was, the total cost for that was $2,258,935.50. The available budget for these projects are, is $2,361,835. And this budget is a combination of our asphalt contractual and shouldering line items in our budget. The solid waste landfill tipping fee and the federal fund exchange program. the solid waste landfill tipping fee, and the federal fund exchange program. All the bridges and culverts are paid out of the two-mill special bridge construction account. And then all the road improvement projects are taken out of the one-mill special road construction project, or account, sorry. So are there any questions?
Nope. Any, any questions or comments by commissioners? Thank you, Justin, for a very detailed outline of next year. Look forward to working with you for this next year. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you.
Okay, item number two.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. This reporting period is mid-November through mid-January. Over that timeframe, we have hired fourteen employees. We have eight that have transferred to a different position and thirteen that are no longer employed. Our fraudulent unemployment claim attempts continue to be on the rise, getting about ten to fifteen per week that we are processing. And now I'm also seeing a, a few people have a second attempt. So, yeah, I think we're up to three that, that they have got a second time. We continue to process ten to fifteen of the emergency paid sick leave requests per week. I have a feeling this week's gonna be a little bit higher. I've already done six today. We're, we completed our United Way campaign with a twelve percent increase. So very pleased about that with the twelve percent of our last year's contributions. And then with the approval of the Corrections Officers Referral Program that Commissioners did approve, we have had two successful hires where employees will be qualifying for the referral incentive if the new recruit remains employed at six months and twelve months. Plans going forward, try to fill vacant positions. Right now, we have nine corrections officer positions that we are attempting to fill. Plus, we'd like to get a couple over hires. One home health registered nurse, a truck driver or a truck driver trainee, a corporal. That will likely be filled in-house. So then that will have that domino effect, and we'll be looking for another corrections officer. Transport officer, again, that's one of those domino effects. We fill in-house with somebody, then we're gonna be looking for a corrections officer to fill that. We're down to one deputy sheriff position that we are in the current process for. It's, we've got an individual that has tested and interviewed. And so hopefully, we'll be successful in hiring that individual. Property technician, which is in our appraiser's office, and, and assistant attorney in the attorney's office, and juvenile intake and assessment on-call positions. That is over at Community Corrections. One position that was sent out that didn't make it on the list before I reported this is a traffic control coordinator position. We do have a blood drive scheduled for February ninth. I'm also working on a work comp audit. Didn't have that on the report here, but I'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. Budget updates, the HR budget ended twenty twenty at about ninety-seven percent used. We might have a few little straggler year-end expenses that are still to be processed, but that's in line with historical averages for HR operations. I did not have these numbers when I wrote this report, but our health plan is running a bit high at about a hundred and seven percent of expenses to funding ratio. And our dental plan is running at a hundred and ten percent. The dental plan was about like that last year as well, and then it leveled off throughout the year. As far as the health plan, we are hitting some little more catastrophic events. And so we've been very fortunate, probably for about the last ten years, to either have a flat renewal or just a very small increase. And we were able to offset those increases with our health insurance trust fund. So I'm hoping we'll be able to maybe level out on our, on our health plan as well. And that is all I have for now.
Hey, thank you, Marilyn. Any comments or at all from commissioners? Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Interest earning report with Jim DuBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wish I had wonderful news to tell you. This is the fourth quarter interest idle fund report, ending in December thirty-first of twenty twenty. If everybody, I don't know if Brad can bring it up or not, but everybody should hopefully have their sheet in front of them with the interest earnings report. And if you look at the fourth quarter, we only earned fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents in interest compared to last year, where we earned a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, which is a difference of a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three, seventy-one. For the year, our total interest that we earned on our idle funds is three hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, twenty-two cents, which is still above our twenty seventeen interest rates where we only earned, where we earned three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven thirty-five, ninety-seven. So we're ahead of twenty seventeen by sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. I wish I had better news to tell you. Unfortunately, the way the economy and COVID is that's unfortunate for our interest earnings. But I will tell you that our collections on taxes were currently at fifty-six point five-five. And you won't have this on your sheet, but last year we were at fifty-seven point one-three. So percentage-wise, we're only a point five-eight percent off of there. So I would say we're pretty close to a break-even on our collections of taxes so far. So having said that, is there any questions from Commissioners?
Well, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks.
Okay. Item number four.
Pre-trial stats update with Andrew Pellet, pre-trial program coordinator with Community Corrections.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm gonna give the pre-trial program update for the months of October through December two thousand twenty. There were seventy placements on pre-trial services in the months of October through December. As of December thirty-first, a hundred and fifty-eight clients are actively being supervised, eleven are in custody, two hundred and seventy-seven have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and a hundred and fifty-eight have had their pre-trial bonds revoked. There have been six hundred and four placements on pre-trial supervision through December thirty-first, impacting the Sleen County Jail by sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four days. I'm gonna offer my usual disclaimer on this. Everyone arrested gets an original bond that they have the opportunity of posting. By the time that we interview and screen them, they're still in custody. And after we complete our screening and the court addresses it, then they bond out, which is where you get that sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four days. But again, they do have an opportunity to bond out on the original bond. The discussion has begun regarding expansion as we are getting set to meet with our district court judges as our pre-trial program moves into twenty twenty-one and beyond. It is important to continue to follow best practices and research related to pre-trial supervision in order to operate a high-fidelity program that best serves the community and the welfare of our clients. From December of two thousand nineteen through December of twenty twenty, our program has been, has seen a thirty-nine point eight percent increase in active clients who have varying degrees of risk factors that need intervention. It's still just ISO Garcia and myself in the program. There's only two of us pre-trial officers. ISO Garcia completes the majority of interviews and risk assessments, which means she goes over to the jail after reviewing bookends. She interviews defendants, and then she comes back and has to run criminal history checks. She has to verify information provided, check with family members, check to see if an address was good. And then I cover all the administrative work and entries, and that's on top of general supervision and making sure they're following conditions of bond set by the court. Defendants who were placed in the pre-trial program in two thousand nineteen spent an average of a hundred and twenty-three point four-one days on supervision. That number has increased to an average of a hundred and thirty-nine point five-two days and on supervision in two thousand twenty, being a thirteen point five percent increase. We're seeing defendants stay on pre-trial supervision a lot longer. A lot of that still has to do with with district courts and trials not being able to take place. I think now they're moved back into June, July, and August. So you're having a lot of defendants in the pre-trial process waiting on resolution who aren't able to go to trials right now and have those set until it gets approved. The addition of UpTrust, which is our pilot program, though effective so far, has been additional effort and time by our ISO Garcia, and I needed to keep information up to date and send and respond to text messages. Our pre-trial program continues to respond to changes affected by COVID nineteen and how it affects our clients. Pre-trial ISOs follow up with clients on court dates and times, and if there are appearances in person or by video. If by BlueJeans video, we make sure clients have the information they need to appear. We still allow clients to come up here to Community Corrections if they're having issues with their internet connection, or they can't make it up to their attorney's office. We allow them to use Community Corrections to get on a laptop, just as long as they have an opportunity to make it into court. A little update on the pilot program I mentioned a little earlier with UpTrust. Drug court and juvenile services, along with pre-trial, are part of the pre-trial, are part of the pilot program with UpTrust. It's a platform to communicate with our clients by text and email messages and send out automated reminders related to court dates and times, office appointments, and other pertinent information needed for effective supervision. Since my last address to Commissioners, our program has invited both the public defenders' office and court services to participate using the UpTrust platform. Both offices agreed to come on board and are in the process of getting up and running and implementing the UpTrust communication tools with their clients. That makes it effective because we generally have similar clients that's on with pre-trial supervision, and maybe also on with the public defenders and then with court services. So the more reminders they get, text message reminders, the more likely that they're going to follow through with those conditions showing up to court and things like that. We continue to work with the UpTrust team, tailoring the platform to the needs of our agency. Right now, we meet with UpTrust representative at least two times a month to address questions or concerns and receive status updates on other changes. In roughly three months since UpTrust was implemented, pre-trial supervision officers have sent out over two thousand text messages to clients with reminders of court, office appointments, and general correspondence. The more, majority of those messages are the automated court reminders with the court dates and times. We continue on pre-trial to address any underlying issues or concerns by making appropriate community referrals for resources and also help cover some costs so they can receive the support they need. We have made several referrals for drug and alcohol services, mental health services, housing, transportation, to name a few. And I'll end this, I, I included a couple ISO client testimonials just to show how the program is positive for e- each person who comes on and takes advantage of it. I'm not gonna read them out loud, but I will, that first one that's listed is a client that I supervised. And I'm going to kind of hit on that a little bit. When she talks about being in the pre-trial program and then being able to reintegrate with her family, have her kids back in her home, rejoining social norms is a reminder to our clients that they're heading in the right direction. I know sending out Christmas cards and receiving them probably seem, you know, something that's normal to us. But it's a reminder to some of our clients who maybe a year ago weren't in this position, that they're heading in the right direction. And it means that the reintegration with the family is working, they're staying clean, they're staying sober. And there's a lot of studies that show that the family unit, if it stays intact in a positive environment, that the, the trickle-down effects on the children are less likely to end up in the system. And so there's a lot of different positive collateral effects from the services that we provide. And then I think the last testimonial was just a client that was talking to Judge Thompson, telling him that if he, if it wasn't for the pre-trial automated text message he received reminded him of a court that he probably would have forgotten to attend. And so that is the update on the pre-trial program. Are there any questions?
About this time. Thank you, Andrew, for quite a detailed information. Any comments from the Commissioners? Okay. Quarterly budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So just to update the Commission on the budget performance for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty, it is generally a very positive news. You just heard from County Treasurer Jim DuBois about some of the interest pieces that were certainly below our expectations, our budget. And, and there were a couple of other sources of income that were smaller than what we anticipated as well. However, this was really made up for from other sources, including interest on delinquent taxes, officer fees, grants, and most notably, our sales tax performance. I think when we prepared the budget for twenty twenty, back in twenty nineteen, we sort of went along with sort of historical norms. And then when we were working on the budget for twenty twenty-one, back in the late spring of twenty twenty, we were at the very beginning of COVID, sort of the height of uncertainty about what COVID's impact on our revenues was going to be. And so really tanked the rest, revenue estimates at that time. And so, in fact, our sales tax revenue for twenty twenty set another record. Folks appear to have been spending money locally instead of traveling to maybe, maybe some of the major metro areas to spend their money. So we exceeded our budget for for sales tax by over four hundred thousand dollars and exceeded the, the planning number for twenty twenty-one by over one point three million dollars. So very positive on the revenue side. The expenditures are a little bit less certain because, as Marilyn Lemer alluded to in her report, we do have invoices that trickle in at the end of the year. And so we don't have exact numbers to nail down. We'll have some audit adjustments to move things back to twenty twenty. But in general, what we know as of now, also very positive on the expenditure side. The only budget in the general fund that, that came in over budget was elections, which we knew that was going to happen. And they also completely offset that overage by increased grant revenues. So they're very positive on both the revenue side and the expenditure side. The one black cloud that I guess I will note is Fire District number four. Fire District number four, as the Commission is aware, is a small area in the industrial area at the south end of Salina that's outside the city limits that is provided a county service via contract with the city fire department. And despite the fact that it has the highest mill levy among the rural fire districts, it's just not generating enough revenue to sustain that contract. We had to actually wait until we got the first disbursement in twenty twenty-one to pay the final bill for twenty twenty, to avoid that fund going into a negative cash position. So that is something that we're really going to need to take a look at as part of the twenty twenty-two budget preparation process and figure out some alternatives for providing that service in that particular fire district. But otherwise, all the other fire districts, all the other special districts, all the other funds, very positive report as of the end of twenty twenty. And I would be happy to answer any questions from Commissioners.
Any comments, any questions for Phil?
Commissioner Wees. Uh Phil, I have one one question on the fire district number four. Is it uh is it because the contract has increased? Is why the the mill levy cannot keep pace with with the cost or or what what do you attribute that to, I guess?
I think we simply haven't been carrying over enough cash from year to year. I think we have been um setting the mill rate very close to the amount of the contract. And we actually need to be setting the mill rate higher than the contract amount in order to generate some cash to carry over from year to year. Um and just that just simply hasn't been happening. The cash has been dwindling each year. And um this year we're in a um position I described where we had to actually hold a a bill until we got our first distribution. So um that's something that um obviously we cannot allow to continue and need to to get addressed in the next budget cycle.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Phil. All right. Uh and you're up next, uh item number six. County administrators update.
So just thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief update on two items. Um the the continued progress on um development of the new jail site. And last Wednesday, we had another meeting with the uh architect and his team and um went through some preliminary plans. We do now have a uh preliminary site drawing on the website. And for as a reminder for folks, we do have a jail page on the county's website and folks can go there and sign up for updates. I'm also pleased that the architect uh reported to me this morning that they did submit to the city of Salina on Friday uh the application for a zoning change and road vacation on the parcel. So that is moving along on the schedule that we had previously mentioned. So I think everything is going um reasonably well with the with the jail project. The other item is the start of the legislative session. Uh the legislature is back in Topeka as of last Monday. And things are moving fairly rapidly, uh given the fact that it's the start of a new uh biennium. And in particular, the Senate passed a bill already uh regarding local property taxes. And so Senate Bill 13 uh is a sort of a rehash of SB 294 from last year's session uh that was ultimately passed by both houses and then vetoed by the governor um as part of another bill. Um this bill would end the property tax lid on cities and counties. That is the positive part. However, it would impose a brand new requirement on counties to uh distribute, county clerks in particular, to distribute a new notice to all taxpayers about uh tax rates, not just for the counties, but for all um underlying jurisdictions as well. And um so we have some concerns about the timing of all that. Um and uh uh but in general, it's it's probably a a good thing for the the tax lid to go away and and increase transparency to the public. The House Tax Committee will be um hearing that bill tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM. So I'm going to reach out to a few of the folks uh on that uh tax committee. Um Representative Clark Sanders and then a couple of folks that I just know personally and ask uh really that they just sort of um address one issue with the bill, which is the bill as currently written um would be retroactive to January 1st of this year. Uh and uh we're not sure that we could actually um effectively implement it this year for 2022. We we think it'd be great to push that out a year to make sure we have all our software systems lined up and so forth. But um that's sort of where we are with uh the legislature. So I'd be happy to answer questions about either of those items as well.
Any comments from the commissioners? See none? Uh any commissioners' comments?
Yes, this is uh Commissioner Vidrickson. And uh my my comment is directed towards uh Jamie uh and the county clerk's office. Uh Jamie, you and I talked to two or three weeks ago regarding uh township appointments. And uh I I've had some more calls from people. Uh we haven't appointed them yet, and I understand that, but uh they have uh treasurer positions unfilled and they need to pay some bills. And they're kind of quizzing us as to when we would be moving forward with that. Do you have any any update on that or anything or fill the commission in?
Um yes, we actually had to wait until the term of office began to see if there were any vacancies. So now that we have um everyone uh in office or the the ones that we did have one decline the position, um we can move forward on doing that. Um as far as the uh bills that need to be paid, um that township, the trustee is actually in charge of that um governing body. So I I would think that um that person could make those payments if they don't have a treasurer at this time.
Okay, so so in other words, a treasurer, it doesn't have to be the treasurer that pays the bill. It can be, of course, if they don't have anybody, they'll have to get somebody assigned to their uh signature page, I would assume then, so.
Yes, and I've actually, sorry, I've actually um suggested to uh multiple townships that they don't just have one person on their checking account, that they have two people so that if for some reason um one person is unavailable or not able to sign checks, that they have someone else that can do so.
Good idea. Uh how however, do- doesn't the county commission play a role in this? Don't we have to approve or appoint people to these positions or not?
Yes, we do. Uh but those just positions just became vacant last Monday.
Uh yeah.
So I'm getting getting together that list to do so.
Okay, can 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 I tell these people that, you know, it's probably probably be next week or something? Is that a safe judgment?
Um for the ones that we know people want to be appointed to, um which currently is only one, um that would be safe to say that it it could come before the commission next week, but the commission still has to vote on it as a whole. Um so we could do that. But I do have some positions that are vacant that I don't have names yet for, so those might come at a later date.
Well, and that let that be a word to the wise too for the for the people that are in those townships that they need to get busy if they if no one ran for those offices. They need to find a a a person that will willing to be able to fulfill those positions. And they need to take some of that leadership role upon themselves also. So, well, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Jamie. Any other uh comments by commissioners? Item A, announcements. Are there any announcements by commissioners? I have one I'd really like to say is uh congratulate Sheriff Roger Solden uh as he's been appointed by Kansas Governor Laura Kelly to the Kansas Commission on Police Officer Standards and Trainings. So, Mr. Solden, uh we want to thank you for your service and uh congratulate you on your appointment. So at that time, are any other comments by commissioners? Announcements? Okay. Now, next on agenda is executive session recess to breakout room.
How long will we need?
Uh through the chair, uh I think we should uh do probably 10 minutes on this. And it would be for um the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act involving the five commissioners, myself and HR Director Marilyn Lehmer.
Mr. Chairman, I move we we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:25.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we need a vote. Commissioner White? Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Okay, we're back into regular session uh from the executive session, and we do have a motion to make. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we appoint David Flaherty as Expo Center Director effective March 20th.
Do we have a second?
I accept the motion.
Do we have a second? I missed it, okay.
Commissioner Weiss here on second for motion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to approve David Flaherty II to exec. Uh, County Expo Director uh starting March 20th. All of, uh, do I have a mo- I mean, Mr. White? Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. One finishing, uh, and uh I guess that's it for today and thank you all for attending and so anyway, um, a German, we have a German, thank you.